Nearly 3,500 people nationwide were killed in crashes involving distracted driving. 391,000 others injured.
It is 100% preventable, these injuries and deaths of Americans that we could be saving if we would just pay attention to what's in front of us while we're driving.
Councilman Paul Krikorian joins Lynch and LAPD Valley Traffic Officers in Van Nuys to launch the ads on National Teen Driver Safety Week.
Hopefully it'll start conversations, people will see it, they'll think twice about sending that totally unnecessary text while they're driving, or they'll realize the importance of pulling to the curb and stopping your car if it's urgent.
Lynch, whose son was struck by a teen driver, wants parents to spread the word.
Really talk to your children and make sure too that you're doing the right behavior, that you are a responsible model. It's not only teens texting behind the wheel, or distracted behind the wheel, it's the mothers and fathers too.
In Van Nuys, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Councilman Krikorian estimates more than a quarter of drivers ages 16 to 34 text and drive on a regular basis. Well, sometimes small gestures go a long way. Rasha Goel was on location with some Angelinos who came together to create a special welcome home package for new tenants. Rasha?
Yana, I'm here in North Hollywood. Now, I am standing in actually one of the units that's going to be a part of a complex for transitional supportive housing for homeless individuals. And this basket right here, well, it's going to be a welcome home basket that's going to be placed in each of the units here as individuals move into their new homes by the end of the year.
It hit home for me. Just, I know someone that was once homeless, and so seeing this just brings joy to my heart that we can give back and make that difference.
Nicole Vargas volunteered her time to help package the baskets. She's among the employees at Cabo Inc., a company specializing in travel accessories which donated and put the baskets together.
Basic essentials, things like toilet paper, pillows, plates, and other utensils. Unfortunately, a lot of people in the world don't have these basic essentials.
The baskets will be placed in each apartment of this 50-unit complex being built by L.A. Family Housing, an organization helping people transition out of homelessness.
These beautiful apartments are part of a larger transformative development that we lovingly call "The Campus" at L.A. Family Housing. The campus serves as a new model in homeless services across the region, and will be the first to co-locate apartments with healthcare, with our comprehensive outreach team serving the entire valley, and a comprehensive service center for all of our partners to work together under one roof.
When people move into housing, often they don't have the basic necessities that they need. The soap dish is bare. They don't have the curtain rod, or the shower curtain. They don't have the sheets for the bed, or sometimes not even the mattress. And when we can put together the generosity of Los Angeles, we can put together the donations that we get from around this amazing city of angels, we can give people a sense that they aren't just moving into a home, they're being embraced by a community.
City officials say it goes beyond a basket.
But every time we touch anyone who is living on the streets and we can connect them to services like L.A. Family Housing, you are empowering a woman. You are empowering an entire family to be able to get back on their feet.
Making a difference that will leave a lasting impact. In North Hollywood, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The volunteer effort was coordinated through a program called MOVE, part of the mayor's Office of Volunteer Engagement. And on the other side of town, even more volunteers came together for a different cause: cleaning up our beaches. Gil Reyes reports from the gathering at Cabrillo Beach during a worldwide cleanup.
Ten-year-old Owen Stover and his dad are among the tens of thousands of volunteers helping out in the largest coastal cleanup on the planet.
Because I love the ocean, and I think it's disrespectful to leave trash on the beach.
Others worldwide feel the same way. That's why all 50 states and around 100 nations took part in Coastal Cleanup Day. This yearly effort, in Cabrillo Beach in San Pedro alone, removed all these plastic bottles, wrappers, and other junk.
Usually about 300 pounds worth of trash, and generally, sometimes about 200 pounds of recyclables.
Much more was the amount of trash collected statewide. The California Coastal Commission says 510,000 pounds of trash was removed from beaches, rivers, and streams throughout the Golden State in one day. Volunteers included students from Cortinez Visual and Performing Arts School in downtown.
You know, I think anything that gets my students involved, whether we're doing cleanups in their neighborhood, or coming out to the beach to do cleanups, or doing recycling on campus, whatever they can do to kind of make small impacts, I think lots of people making small impacts is really important.
Small impacts, making a world of difference in this global cleanup. Reporting from Cabrillo Beach, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Ocean Conservancy says 6,000 separate events took place worldwide, including cleanups in Venice and in Santa Monica. Well, turning now to a day of recognition for cops and firefighters who have gone above and beyond their usual call of duty. Anna Marcos shows us how the E-Awards remind us of our everyday public safety heroes.
Recent wildfires and shooting tragedies are on the minds of many here, and why not? They are cops and firefighters. But on this day, the E-Awards honor the heroic more than the tragic.
I see it more important, not only every day, but particularly now, in very difficult times. What happened recently, the massacre in Las Vegas, certainly the fires that are going on in California, our first responders are living on the edge.
Six L.A. cops and six L.A. firefighters are taking center stage for living on that edge and going beyond, as Councilmember Mitch Englander honors their efforts in saving lives. These are the men and women who rescue people in burning buildings, who save others from committing suicide, who find a home for the homeless, and get victims through the terrors of domestic violence.
The majority of them are female victims. I think I just bring that soft side to things. I have just a way about me where they just feel comfortable and calm, and feel like I've got that nurturing side of me, and they feel comfortable actually sharing their story.
There was a guy that's a military veteran, Navy veteran, that had been living on the streets and up off of Mulholland in the bushes for, you know, over a decade. And we were able to connect him to services. With L.A. Family Housing, was able to get him an apartment.
I appreciate being nominated and a recipient of this award, but we were just doing what we do every day.
The awards honor not just current public safety heroes, but future ones as well, including three up-and-coming cadets.
I'm planning on being a forensic psychologist. I think just hard work and determination got to me.
From looking to the future to looking back at your life's work, 31-year LAPD veteran Bill Bustos gets a Lifetime Achievement Award for his detective work in solving traffic crimes.
We had a double-hit run. There was a fatality. I think I was awake for about 46 hours. We continued to go and go and go until we made an arrest.
Yes, it seems these heroes are always on the go, keeping the bad guys and the bad fires at bay, so we stay safe. And on this one day, they get a pat on the back. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
A second Lifetime Achievement Award went to L.A. Fire Department chopper pilot Eric Rice. While school can be tough enough as it is, now imagine having to lug all those heavy books without a backpack. As Gil Reyes reports, local churches wanted to make sure a group of students got the supplies they needed.
South L.A. Councilmember Curran Price helps to hand out free backpacks to underserved middle school kids in South Los Angeles, kids like Samantha Alvarez.
Well, it feels good because my backpack was ripped.
Yes, ripped. Until now, little Samantha had to carry her books by hand. Not easy if she had to carry a lot. But that's all in the past. It's a great day for her classmates, too. The lucky recipients: 250 kids from Normandy Elementary School. The backpacks were made available through community donations, and it's a very special day for Councilman Curran Price because he actually attended school here during the early 1960s.
Oh, fond memories of playing kickball, you know, the ball going over the fence, of course. But just having a lot of fun, and really understanding the importance of the community, surrounding communities.
Community nonprofits like Keep Neighborhoods First helped supply the book bags. So did the group Churches in Action, led by Bishop Juan Carlos Mendez.
Churches in Action, which is a coalition of 3,000 churches here in the city of Los Angeles, have been doing this for the last 10 years. And we're so proud of our churches and parishioners who voluntarily, you know, give an offering.
Like angels on their shoulders, providing much-needed sacks for the children's backs. In South Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Normandy Principal Dr. Sandra Sklarsch would like to thank Keep Neighborhoods First, local churches, and Councilman Price, as the free book bags are expected to go a long way in the children's education. Well, turning now to L.A.'s growing senior citizen population, the mayor has a new directive called Purposeful Aging L.A. And now the Department of Rec and Parks wants to help seniors fight aging with a bit of cardio. Anna Marcos has more from a health fair for seniors in the Valley.
This health and wellness fair is a chance to get your salsa and your zumba on, especially if you are over 50. The Department of Recreation and Parks wants seniors to stay active and healthy, and they can take any of the classes shown here at their favorite local senior center.
You seem a little out of breath here.
Yeah, well, I'm not used to zumba. It gets your heart rate up, you know, it gets everything moving and grooving, and it's enjoyable.
It's important to keep moving, whether it's walking every day, it's parking your car further away from the grocery store, so that you take that extra step, or you can come to Recreation and Parks and take a free class.
And once they're done catching the breath, senior citizens here can get answers on everything from meals on wheels, to Alzheimer's care, to even their blood pressure numbers.
I'm diabetic, and I have heart pressure. I'm sick from my cholesterol, and I have heart pains.
So you need to get check records.
Yeah. So now I'm drinking all-natural best of juices. And I walk in, and I work with kids. I go walking on the park, and I'm getting help.
I'm 70. Seventy is young, not old.
The fair even has its own elderly Olympian of sorts. Hito Moriyasu is both a gold and silver medalist in this year's National Senior Games. His sport: table tennis. But the guys also run 30 marathons.
When you are active, you can think better, because you put oxygen in your brain, you know? Think better. If I stay home and doing nothing, I'll be dead.
Ah, he looks very much alive to us. The big message here: a few healthy habits just might keep you healthy, active, and alive well into your golden years. Most seniors can drink to that. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Representatives of Councilmember Paul Krikorian's office were also on hand for the event. Well, we all know L.A. is a hub for diversity, and some folks in downtown L.A. got a taste of one of the city's most exotic cultures. Anna Marcos takes us to a party in Thai Town that helped celebrate the mayor's Great Streets Initiative.
Visitors got quite a taste of Thai at the so-called Papa Bee event, a kind of block party which kicked off in L.A.'s Thai Town. And there was reason to celebrate. The community just got awarded one of the mayor's Great Streets Initiative grants for their vision in developing the area, and they want to advertise Thai culture to all Angelinos.
It's very good, because people know about more Thai Town, and then people that come here to visit, to shopping, to eat Thai food, and also massage.
Today is a culmination of over six months of community engagement to develop a vision for Thai Town and Hollywood Boulevard.
In the last few years, the Thai Community Development Center has painted Thai-inspired crosswalks in the area, improved sidewalks, planted trees, and put up Thai signs and statues. Now it's using its $10,000 Great Streets Initiative grant to get residents' input for improving Thai Town even more. Not all the comments are good.
They agree to the top three concerns. That's homelessness, vandalism, crime, and dirty streets.
Okay, there is room for improvement, but let's get back to that Thai dance and theater, or even better, the Thai food.
You can find the best, you know, Thai food, the most authentic Thai food, very spicy, very delicious Thai food, right here in Thai Town. The best Thai food you can find outside of Thailand.
So there you go. You can spend a day or evening visiting Thailand without ever leaving L.A. And that's the main point of the party, so come visit. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
L.A.'s Thai Town is located on Hollywood Boulevard, a few blocks east of the 101. Well, it's not just about making home runs on the field. For the Dodgers, it's also about pitching the right messages to the community. Rasha Goel has more.
It's a day of play and service for Dodger alumni as they partner with 50 volunteers from United Healthcare to help create a pathwalk for students at the Alessandro Elementary School.
We're inviting the kids here to walk the path as much as they could, and be healthy as they grow. It's important for both the Dodgers and United Healthcare to promote healthy living.
Just be more active and better citizens.
A pathway with inspirational messages will be painted, along with planting a garden. It's something the students are excited about.
I feel that they really care about this school, and they really care about our education.
I think it's kind of awesome how all the people come together and actually make the school really bright and fun for the kids to play and be really active.
This is just one of the many things the Dodgers do to give back.
The Los Angeles Dodgers are part of the cultural fabric here in Los Angeles, and it is our responsibility to help meet the community needs. And we do that in various ways. We bring kids to the stadium. We do work in the community, like today, and so we feel very responsible.
Responsible for a gift that will impact generations of students to come. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
A controversial LAPD pilot program is about to take off. Metro kicks off a new campaign to remind riders to mind their manners, and a couple of beloved music teachers from San Fernando High School get special recognition. All these stories in City View. The Police Commission, the civilian panel that oversees the Los Angeles Police Department, approved a drone pilot program several months after the department first presented what it called "A Limited Plan to Use the Technology." The approval came despite opposition from activists who consider the technology a threat to civil liberties. Only 6% of the nearly 1,700 emails the department received about the program were in support of it. According to the guidelines the commission approved, drones would be used in a limited capacity, including high-risk tactical operations, barricaded armed suspect responses, hostage rescues, and situations involving threats of exposure to hazardous materials. Metro has launched an online and print etiquette campaign to raise public awareness about proper behavior and manners while riding its buses and trains. The Metro Manners Campaign uses anime characters and focuses on what the agency said are some of the most common etiquette problems on the transportation system, including seat hogging, blocking aisles, and eating and drinking while riding. The campaign features actress and YouTube star Anna Akana as Superkind, Metro's official protector of the agency's Customer Code of Conduct, who battles a monster named Rude Dude who frequently violates Metro's etiquette rules.
And these rules are in place to ensure that everybody has an enjoyable ride on Metro, and that they respect other people's rights when they're on the transit system.
Los Angeles City Councilwomen Monica Rodriguez and Nuri Martinez designated the intersection at Laurel Canyon Boulevard and Chamberlain Street as Giger Square to honor the late Richard Giger Jr. and Ellen Giger, beloved band and drill team instructors at San Fernando High School. Richard Giger Jr., who directed the San Fernando High School marching band, passed away in November of 2016. During the couple's 17-year tenure, the band won 13 L.A. Unified School District Band and Drill Team championships. The school's music building and mural were also recently dedicated to Richard Giger Jr. Martinez and Rodriguez are both graduates of San Fernando High School.
They were absolutely dedicated and taught us to be the very best of ourselves.
Boyle Heights just got a new landmark that celebrates female empowerment of all kinds. But the artist just might surprise you. Anna Marcos takes us to the unveiling.
Murals are back in a big way in Boyle Heights, and this one, called Empowerment, is causing quite a buzz. It's the work of a 15-year-old girl.
Seeing the faces of little girls passing by and smiling and asking questions about the mural gave me such a sense of accomplishment.
For Isabel Peinato, it all started with a Girl Scout badge. She wanted to earn the Gold Award, the highest Girl Scout honor, but her mural proposal soon turned into an epic art project to celebrate women leaders of all races.
I want everyone that passes by to feel like their ethnicity is up here, and that they're important, and for them to learn about the different women up here.
The artist who does this starts to become something like the person they're painting. And that's what I think about Isabel, who had saw something in it.
Peinato sure picked some great role models. Besides Rosa Parks, there's leaders like Mae Jamison, the first African-American woman astronaut. There's a Supreme Court Justice, a talk show host, a women's rights activist, a singer, a novelist, even Princess Diana. Oh, and don't forget, famous Mexican artist Frida Kahlo.
It also is a tribute to female power, diversity, and social change.
Councilmember Jose Wezar and his family helped Peinato with encouragement, funding, and a building on which to paint her mural. Wezar's daughter, a classmate of Peinato's at the L.A. County High School for the Arts, even pitched in with a painting, as did other classmates.
This is where the mural movement started for the city of Los Angeles, and it spread throughout the city. And at 110, we are known as having the most public murals anywhere in the world. Unfortunately, because of some lawsuits, there was a 10-year ban on murals in the city.
Luckily, the ban on murals was lifted in 2013. As for Peinato, well, she put in well over the 80 hours required for the Gold Award with a whopping 600 hours. We think somebody just earned that Gold Award Girl Scout badge. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Peinato says she's been taking art classes since she was five, but her goal is to become a photographer or architecture designer. Well, come out for the Dia de las Muertes celebration at Hollywood Forever Cemetery, learn all about death and mourning during the Victorian era, and a Halloween carnival that's sure to keep the kids entertained. All this in this week's Things to Do. Hollywood Forever Cemetery is proud to present the 18th Annual Dia de las Muertes Festival, recognizing the legacy of Posada. Over 100 years ago, Posada gave us many of the foundational images of Dia de las Muertes that are still venerated today, and which have become treasured images of Mexican culture and identity. J.G. Posada reminds us that art is power, mass-produced by the printing presses and now social media. Come celebrate on October 28 at 12:00 p.m. at Hollywood Forever Cemetery, located at 6,000 Santa Monica Boulevard. History buffs step back in time for the 14th Annual Halloween and Mourning Tour at the Heritage Square Museum. Learn all about death and mourning etiquette during the Victorian era, the movement of spiritualism, and how other cultures celebrate and remember their loved ones. From authentic Victorian attire to fortune telling, this morbid affair is not to be missed. It all takes place on Saturday, October 28, and Sunday, October 29, at the Heritage Square Museum, located at 3,800 Homer Street. For more, visit heritagesquare.org. For even more Halloween fun, head on over to the Halloween Festival and Haunted Maze at the North Hollywood Rec Center. There will be plenty of activities for the kids, along with candy and games, cookie decorating, mummy wraps, bobbing for radioactive donuts, and bingo for the adults. The fun begins at 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 28, at 11430 Chandler Boulevard in North Hollywood. And that's a look at some things to do.
It's astounding. Time is fleeting.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us Here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
911 Emergency Operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond. Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Gina Ray, and this is my dog Whippet. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
... clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bond, and Buscaino Sadio, Englander Harris Dawson, Wezar Corretts, Krikorian Martinez, O'Farrell, Price Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval in the minutes.
Mr. O'Farrell moves. Mr. Price seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corretts moves. Mr. Buscaino seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to reduce the lien amount for item 1A to $272.40 due to partial payment and partial rescension.
So ordered. Continue.
Item 1 is an item notice for a public hearing, and, Mr. President, there are cards on item 1.
Okay, then let's move forward.
Items 2 and 3 are items through which public hearings have been held.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. Mr. Buscaino?
Okay.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on those items. Madam clerk, if you'd please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Items 4 through 7 are items through which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on 4 through 7, sir.
Okay, then let's move on.
That brings counsel to presentations, items called special or public comment.
Thank you. In fact, I do want to recognize Mr. Buscaino for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we ought to do a TMZ day for you, Mr. President.
Anytime you'd like.
You know, what a way to cap off Italian Heritage Month, colleagues, by welcoming a delegation from Sardinia, which is an amazing region in Italy. This week, we are welcoming the government of the Italian island of Sardinia, who are visiting Los Angeles. They're accompanied by several Sardinian entrepreneurs and members of the Instituto Italiano Pericommercio Estero, the Italian Trade Institute. Here with me is Dr. Luciana Martini, who is in charge of the Company Services Department of the Sardinia Region, as well as Mr. Massimo Carboni, the Special Assistant, the Vice President of the region of the Autonomous Region of Sardinia, in charge of investment, attraction, research and development, innovation network, and special affairs. Do want to recognize also Giovanni Sanna, who has worked with the, is a co-founder, rather, of the executive and executive chairman of a leading Sardinian venture incubator called Pube Club. A fast-growing company focused on clean tech, IOT, architect, digital technologies. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, the mayor, and this entire body before you, we want to welcome you to the John Ferraro Chambers here in the City of Los Angeles. Benvenuti, dimando un abbraccio, and we welcome you. You know, trade relationships are important to this great city, and we thank you for your investment and your interest in partnering with the City of Los Angeles and companies throughout this region. Aguri, thank you, benvenuti, and we welcome you.
Give him a round of applause. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. I'd like to recognize Mr. Sadio for today's first presentation. Gilbert, the floor is yours.
Up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, it's been a great week for these chambers. It's been a great week because in many respects, it's been a Bruin week. This week, we hosted and honored Keith Parker for his career at UCLA. And today, we are here to honor, on its 45th anniversary, Samahang Filipino, which is a progressive group of students on the UCLA campus. They're known for their activism, their political participation, their advocacy, their community involvement, and their educational support. As an alum myself, I feel very fortunate to have on my staff eight Bruins. In addition, there are four Filipino-Americans on my staff. Three are members or alumni of the Samahang Filipino group. As you know, on my staff, I have as Bruins Debbie Kim, Jose Rodriguez, Hugo Ortiz, Silver Robledo, Edward Soriano Hewitt, Gerald Gubitan, Mel Ilomin, and Tony Ricasa. In fact, they call my office the Filipino Worker Center in some communities. Since its founding in 1972, Samahang Filipino and its members have provided leadership in establishing and institutionalizing programs like Asian American Studies, Filipino-American classes, recruitment, and retention programs on that great campus. They continue to produce much acclaimed Filipino cultural night. They have continued to build a coalition side by side with other communities fighting for social justice and equality. They fought for increased racial and gender diversity at a time when it was unpopular. They fought for the release of falsely accused and imprisoned Korean-American Cho Su Lee. They fought for the divestment of the university from apartheid South Africa, and they continue to fight for civil rights and the rights of all people, including the LGBTQ community. And so it's with great pride that I introduce this resolution, and I call in two members of this community to come forward and join us. Joel Jacinto, as we call him, Joel Jacinto, and Natalie Ricasa Bagaporo, who is the current Samahang Filipino president. Please come forward. Is she still here? Yes, Toni? Okay, Natalie. Are you related to Toni?
I am.
Oh, and Toni's niece, by the way. You like to keep it in the family.
Welcome, Toni's niece.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilmembers, and thank you, Councilmember Corretts, for honorably representing UCLA as part of your district. I especially want to thank Councilmember Sadio for presenting UCLA Samahang Filipino with a resolution in recognition of its 45th year of advocacy on behalf of Filipino students and the Filipino-American community. More than words, he's about action, and he's proven support for the Filipino community by actions that he took when he was a legislator in the State Assembly. He authored a bill that was signed into law, giving Filipino World War II veterans monetary benefits. That made California the first and only state to provide benefits for Filipino World War II veterans. He even did this before our federal government took action. But Councilmember Sadio's work does not stop at the State Assembly. His continued support of Filipino-American community is evidenced by his Filipino-American staff, and for that representation and inclusion, we are much very grateful. Thank you, Councilmember Sadio, for showing true commitment to the Filipino-American community. In 1972, Samahang Filipino was established out of a need to bring together the members of the Filipino and Filipino community at UCLA. Every Friday evening, Samahangers would gather over a meal and create a strong sense of community. In an institution such as UCLA that does not foster an environment where marginalized identities can grow and actualize their full potential, Samahang Filipino was established to remedy those inequities, to provide that sense of home, that sense of community, and that family to the students. Through our five pillars, social, academic, cultural, political, and community, and our five core values of one family, relevant education, critical approach, social justice, and collectivism, we, as Samahang Filipino, inspire and aspire to empower community members in order to bring them from UCLA into the broader L.A. community. We hope to also bring to light the narratives of the Filipino and Filipino-American struggle and experience by bridging the experiences and lives of older members of our community with current undergraduate students, and also reaching out to the younger generation, and hopefully empowering them as well. With the evolution of Filipino and Filipino-American experiences, Samahang has adapted and grown to address the growing and changing community conditions. Our latest monumental achievement was establishing a Filipino learning living community through residential life, in which new students can enroll in the university and experience firsthand Filipino culture, history, and heritage. For over 40 years, for over 45 years, Samahang has continued to address the issues of access and retention within the Filipino community, as well as sharing the narrative with the greater UCLA community and Los Angeles area. Our efforts and advocacy stem not only from the university, but have continued in work such as city council and in the national level as well. On behalf of Samahang Filipino, we are so grateful that we have a space here today. We've spent the past, oh, thank you. We spent the past 45 years carving out a space and carving out resources for Filipinos and Filipino-Americans to succeed and hopefully pursue leadership in order to change the community on a greater level, and it is my honor to be presenting Samahang Filipino to you all today. So, thank you.
So, colleagues, with that, on behalf of the entire City Council of the City of Los Angeles, I present to you UCLA Samahang Filipino. This resolution is right here. This resolution honors your organization's 45th anniversary and Samahang's contributions to UCLA and the greater city of Los Angeles, the state of California. We thank you for your presence.
Give him another round of applause. Congratulations.
President, if I may, I'd like to...
I see we've been joined by our great Commissioner.
Yes.
So I'm assuming you might want to ask him come to the mic. So why don't you come up to the mic? Good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio, Council President Wesson, honorable councilmembers, especially my comadre. Monique, I just ran from a public works meeting. So excited to be here with my brothers and sisters, our brothers and sisters, along with Tony Ricasa, Mel Ilomin, Gerald Gubitan, Edos Soriano Hewitt, to, because there's something in the water at UCLA, just like the how there is at San Fernando Valley High School, where our two great councilwomen are from. There's an ethic where we came from about service and stewardship and being a part of community. And I want to thank Noodle Bagaporo and her leadership, and all these great young people who will continue the tradition of service. Councilmember Sadio, thank you for your recognition, because you're a student organizer yourself. You know what it takes and what the ethic has to be in terms of campus, community. So we salute... So we salute the city council. Thank you so much for giving our group life, so that more generations of student leaders will continue to serve and empower our great city.
Thank you. Give him one more round of applause. Always a pleasure to see you. So as they retreat to the back of the chambers, I want to inform Ms. Martinez that you are on deck.
I'll go first and then I'll introduce. Chief Grimala and Chief, um, where's Miranda? Chief Miranda? You start, Miranda. There we go. Thank you, Council President, and good morning, colleagues. Today, I'm recognizing the Pink Patch Project, specifically the 16 safety departments, public safety departments, that have taken initiative and leadership to fight against breast cancer. I am proud to stand here today honoring our men and women in uniform that saw a problem and took it upon themselves to solve it. The Pink Patch Project is a collaborative effort between the Los Angeles County Chiefs Association and public safety agencies across the nation. As of today, 250 agencies have partnered up with the Pink Patch Project, with the majority being from LA County. And we can just take a moment and appreciate that most things actually start in the City of Los Angeles. So we're very, very honored about that. It makes me happy to live and represent a city where people actually support one another, especially when it comes to women's issues. The Pink Patch Project does that all in of itself. By including the pink patch on their uniforms, they increase public awareness and raise funds for breast cancer research. And I think that should be applauded and...
Let's give him a round of applause.
A big round of applause for taking that initiative.
I think we all agree.
The fact that these men and women are shining light on this issue that affects not only women, but anyone who has ever had a family member or a friend been diagnosed with breast cancer, it is truly, truly honorable. Breast cancer is the second-leading cause, cancer death, among women. And one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with an invasive breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. And let me just point out that this is not an isolated issue for women alone. It impacts everyone. It impacts a mother's son. It impacts a wife's husband. It impacts a sister's brother. It impacts a woman's father. This is not an isolated event, and it's an issue that we should all, all be aware of. And the Pink Patch Project has succeeded, and it continues to succeed, with bringing attention to the fight against breast cancer. The fascinating thing about the Pink Patch Project is that their approach, is their approach to breast cancer awareness. Public safety agencies are very unique, in which they come into contact with people's lives every single day. They're invited into people's homes, schools, and people's everyday lives. And the Pink Patch gives them an opportunity to make a real human connection with this awful disease. And it actually creates a vehicle for awareness. It opens a line of breast cancer communication. At a time when sometimes we often feel so divided in this country, the Pink Patch Project actually brings us together and unites us under one cause. And let me just take a moment to thank an individual who I credit for bringing the Pink Patch Project to LA County, is Chief Anthony Miranda. Let's give him a big round of applause. Chief Miranda began this initiative back in 2014 with just one agency partnering, and three years later, it exploded to almost 250 agencies now participating. I want to introduce Chief Miranda, have him say a few words about his efforts and his dedication and hard work to bringing this to the City of Irwindale, when he used to be chief there. Now he's a chief in the City of Vernon, and I just want to applaud him and say a few words of why this means so much to him.
Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council, and I want to thank Councilman Martinez for this invitation. On behalf of the Pink Patch Project, I represent the Los Angeles County Police Chiefs as the Chair of the project. And we are honored to stand shoulder to shoulder with our partners in this project here. Again, we're truly humbled and honored. The Pink Patch Project is growing, and with even recognition such as this, where many viewers are out watching the show today, more will be known. And our goal is honestly, is just to bring more awareness. And the funds we raise are a benefit. But we really want to raise awareness, because early detection is probably one of the key factors in surviving breast cancer. And as Councilwoman Nuria says, Martinez, is that we have that special opportunity in the field to make those connections on a daily basis. And when people see our pink patches, it creates conversations. And from there, our officers, your officers, begin to add value in our communities. And I think that's what I'm most proud of, and I'm proud to be here and want to thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief. I also want to introduce a very special individual. You all know her, our LAPD Assistant Chief Beatrice Grimala, to say a few words on behalf of the department as well. Chief?
Chief, you're always welcome here.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. Thank you, President Wesson, as well. Just on behalf of the Chief of Police and all the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, thank you for the opportunity to stand here with our partners in public safety here this morning. One in three women has breast cancer touch her life. This is an insidious and silent plague on our population. It knows no boundaries. Men are affected as well. Many men are also diagnosed with breast cancer. It doesn't care if you're rich or poor, doesn't care where you live, doesn't care the color of your skin, your religious affiliations, LGBTQ. It affects us all. And this is one cause that we can truly all rally around. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you to my brothers and sisters behind me here. And thank you to this council for recognizing and taking the time, and Councilwoman Martinez for flying that flag for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, help me welcome the Parker Foundation, who is very critical in supporting the Pink Patch Project. Someone's here from the foundation as well, and it's Chris Arco from the Parker Foundation. I'd like for him to say a few words as well.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'd like to say that with the Pink Patch Project, we've been helping out in any which way we can to eradicate this plague. Alongside the City of Hope, we've gone ahead and made various accessories to go ahead and push forward the support. But the best and most obvious accessory, I guess you could call it, has been this car that we've put together. And it's a pink and white rather than a black and white. It's a wonderful...
There it is.
It's a wonderful...
It's a red shock.
Yeah, it's beautiful. And I'd like to go ahead and recognize Officer Lee Lamelli. I'd like to recognize West Coast Customs for all their efforts. And I'd like to recognize Detective Sterling Fields for all his efforts throughout this whole process. And it's been wonderful, and we'd love to help as much as we can. Again, my name is Chris Erica, and I'm the Vice President of the William H. Parker LAPD Foundation.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I also want to welcome Victor Benavides. He's from the City of Hope, the clinical research hospital that is truly making strides in breast cancer research. The money that is raised by the sale of these patches goes directly to the City of Hope. So if he's here, I'd like to ask him to say a few words as well.
There you are.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, President. Honorable council members, honorable president, and esteemed dignitaries, good morning. My name is Victor Benavides from City of Hope, a proud founding beneficiary of the Pink Patch Project. "To protect and to serve," this motto made famous by the Los Angeles Police Department and adopted in various forms by law enforcement agencies across the United States, best describes the brave men and women who don their uniforms every day to make a positive difference in their respective communities. Many of us get our understanding of law enforcement from television and the media. We often don't think of the important work that they do keeping the law-abiding safe, unless we're reminded by the troubling news that has become increasingly prevalent in a seemingly more dangerous world. Rarely do we have the opportunity to look past the blue and tan garb to recognize the humanity of the people who wear these uniforms. Rarely do we hear the stories of the officer who comforts the newly orphaned children of parents who have just overdosed, or about the officer who buys a hungry homeless man a much-needed hot meal and treats him with the dignity that he hungers for even more so. Well, today makes for another one of these inspiring stories. For on this day, the motto "to protect and to serve" means something very special. Today, we recognize a concerted effort by more than 250 public safety agencies across the country to protect some of the most vulnerable in our communities and to serve as shining examples of compassion and altruism. Today, we gather to recognize these heroic men and women for their contributions in the fight against women's cancers, the Pink Patch Project. From the vantage point of someone who was involved since day one, I have witnessed a dramatic increase in participation in the Pink Patch Project. From my initial meeting with then-Chief of the Irwindale Police Department, Anthony Miranda, and his colleague Norma Ortiz, three years ago, the project has now become a nationwide fundraising juggernaut that is funding vital research. I am humbled by their commitment and their compassion, and I'm proud to live and work in a community of men and women, such as those in law enforcement, who risk their lives daily for those struggling to survive. On behalf of City of Hope, I commend all of the men and women in the participating law enforcement agencies here today for their tireless efforts to protect and to serve those who are in most need of their help. These donations will aid City of Hope in our mission to make possible the miracles of science that will one day lead to a cure, so that someday in the future, we can remember these heroes and tell our grandchildren that the good guys won. You can purchase these patches, pins, t-shirts, hats, keychains, and more in the communities where you live and work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Victor. And I also, I know Chris has recognized West Coast Customs, but I want to give them another shout out. Where are you guys? Come forward. Thank you very much for your creativity and ingenuity. There you go. Here you go. He is the guy responsible for the pink car that's outside. I know if we can probably, can we get it back on screen? There you are. Way back. It's lify. Do you want to say a few words about your, he was responsible for tricking this car out? Is that how you say it?
Yeah.
That's how you say it? Okay. All right, go ahead. Take it away. Talk about the car.
I'll make this brief, but good morning, everybody. Good morning, President. Wanted to, on behalf of West Coast Customs, thank the department and especially Lizette Lamelli for the perseverance and determination that she had to bring this campaign to the department and allow us to be honored with building the breast cancer awareness vehicle that if we can just touch a few people that see this vehicle in our communities, that we can make a difference. So we appreciate the opportunity to work together in building this vehicle and spreading breast cancer awareness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're almost close to the end, but I also want to recognize that they have raised $325,000 across this country selling the pink patches, and $220,000 of those dollars have been raised and went directly to the City of Hope. So thank you very much, everyone. And like it was mentioned, if you want to go ahead and purchase any of the patches or keychains to help raise money for breast cancer awareness, you can do so by logging on to thepinkpatch.com. The last thing I want to do is I want to recognize all the agencies that are here this morning that have all participated in the Pink Patch Project. If I can just have you raise your hand. Covina Police Department.
Let's give them a round of applause.
The County of Los Angeles Department of Medical Examiner Coroner.
Thank you. In the back.
The California Association for Property Evidence of Los Angeles Chapter.
We're at, okay.
The Glendora Police Department, the Hawthorne Police Department, the Hermosa Beach Police Department, Irwindale Police Department, the Joint Regional Intelligence Center, the Los Angeles County Department of Sheriff's Department, the LAPD, the Los Angeles School Police.
All right.
The Los Angeles World Airport Police, the Montevideo Police Department, the USC Department of Public Safety, and the Vernon Police Department. Let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much for all your hard work and taking us closer to finding a cure for breast cancer. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause.
We have our token of appreciation to the Parker Foundation for their support of the Pink Project, specifically that pink and white vehicle outside. Where are you? There you are. We also have one for our LAPD, for our Pink and Patch Project. Here we go. Officer Lomen Lee. And also West Coast Customs. Where are you guys? Come back up.
Okay, so as they are retreating to the back, I want to recognize Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. Continuing discussion this morning of breast cancer, a discussion, we just had a very good discussion and presentation about the importance of awareness. And now I want to talk about the importance of the work that's being done to find a cure. I'm standing here for three reasons today. One is in memory of a dear and beloved friend. The second is in celebration of an amazing event that happened last night. And the third is to support and to promote an incredible, remarkable organization that is working to end breast cancer. Many of you knew my friend Liz Smigala Tate. She was a land use lawyer, active in political circles here in Los Angeles, the wife of my dear friend Phil Tate, and the mother of a beautiful little boy named Lucas. A few months after he was born in 2014, Liz was diagnosed with stage four triple-negative lung cancer. Breast cancer, I'm sorry. Breast cancer. And she passed away a few months later. Liz was one of the warmest, smartest, fiercest people I ever knew. She was absolutely larger than life, and she brought every ounce of her spirit and her fight and her determination to her battle against breast cancer. And she did so with such fierceness that she left the legacy to everybody who loved her to pick up that battle and to make sure that we did everything necessary... her to pick up that battle and to make sure that we did everything necessary to find a cure. Every year, Liz had one of the biggest, most elaborate, fun birthday parties in Los Angeles. Lizzapalooza, they called it. It was always an incredible celebration. And her final birthday, she decided to turn in to a fundraiser for breast cancer research. And that has continued every year. And last night, we held LA Goes Pink. It was a phenomenal event organized by Phil and by Liz's dear friend Mia Kelly. Hundreds of people turned out, and in one single night, one single night, this party raised more than $250,000 for breast cancer research. They did so in benefit of the Breast Cancer Research Foundation, which is a nonprofit organization committed to achieving prevention and finding a cure for breast cancer. Founded in 1993, the organization has raised $700 million since then. They have raised that in order to seek out the brightest minds in science and medicine and give them the necessary resources to pursue their best ideas. As a result of their groundbreaking work, researchers are able to make discoveries and design new approaches to address all aspects of breast cancer and to do so in record time. This year, BCRF has awarded more than $57 million in grants to support the work of more than 250 scientists at leading medical and academic institutions across 14 countries. Since its founding, BCRF has contributed more than $30 million in world-class cancer research right here in Southern California at hospitals and universities such as Cedar Sinai, UCLA, and City of Hope. They commit, they're very unique in terms of cancer research organizations. They commit 91 cents of every dollar directly to its mission. They're one of the nation's most fiscally responsible nonprofits. They are the only breast cancer organization in the United States to hold an A-plus from Charity Watch, as well as a top-four star rating from Charity Navigator. They are an amazing organization, and they have worked very hard to find success and advances in tumor biology, genetics, prevention, treatment, metastasis, and survivorship. Last night's event benefited them and celebrated them. And so today, I wanted to bring the organizers of last night's event here with the leaders of BCRF to salute last night's event, to remember and salute Liz, and to honor the organization and officially endorse LA Goes Pink here in Los Angeles. So, I'd like to call up to say a few words from LA Goes Pink, their president, Myra Bibluit. Did I pronounce that right? I did.
That's it.
Welcome, Myra.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here. BCRF stands today as the largest private funder of breast cancer research worldwide. We're very serious about what we do. We're serious about putting resources in the hands of investigators around the globe who are on the front lines, mining every opportunity to change the future for our mothers, our daughters, our sisters, and our friends. We have no endowment. I hit July 1. We raise it afresh every year. And actually, Mike, we just now gave away nearly $60 million in this month's new round of grants to 275 investigators across 15 countries. But right here in Los Angeles, and the reason I'm here is there is such rich scientific talent, and we're proud to have put $30 million into this city. And with the resources raised last night, there will be an LA Goes Pink Liz Tate Award awarded next October.
All right.
I can't thank Mia Kelly, Phil Tate, Mike, and everyone who turned out. Truly, what stands between today and cure, pure and simple, is funding. The answers are coming quickly. The research is really giving us the ability to have targeted, personalized therapy that can give better outcomes with less toxicity. BCRF has been behind virtually every major breakthrough in breast cancer prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and survivorship in the last two decades. I'm in this full bore. It is my heart, my soul, and my mission. I had a sister-in-law who passed away from breast cancer 30 years ago, and I can tell you without a doubt that were she diagnosed today, she would have lived her life out enjoying her grandchildren. That's how quickly the answers are coming. So, investing in research is investing in promise and future and possibility. The Los Angeles community has my heart and my appreciation for giving us more resources to do the job we do. Everyone benefits, the mothers, the fathers, the sisters, the friends. Mike, Mia Kelly, Phil, you honor us with your support. This city honors us, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, I'd also just like to ask Phil Tate, one of the organizers, and Liz's husband, to say a few words.
It's good to see Phil. Phil, good to see you.
Thank you very much. As Mike mentioned, Liz was a very determined person. And one of the things she quickly recognized after being diagnosed with stage IV cancer at 38 years old, 100 days after giving birth to our child, was just how patently unfair that is, but more importantly, how people like her, who did everything right, led a healthy lifestyle, had no history of cancer in the family, got regular medical checkups, they're not going to be saved by pink ribbons. They're going to be saved by research. And so when she decided to turn her last birthday into a fundraiser, it was very important to her that it be an organization focused on research and that it be an organization that used the money effectively. And that's who BCRF is. They're very efficient with the money you give them, and they translate it into treatments, and they translate it into time, which is really what's important. If Liz had been diagnosed five or 10 years prior, we probably would have said goodbye shortly after the diagnosis. But she got 13 more months, and she got to see our son take his first steps, say his first words, and she got to plan his first birthday party. And that's what it's about. It's about giving people these important moments. So, thank you all so much for your support of this event. The city has been phenomenal, lighting up City Hall, lighting up the pylons at LAX. It's a beautiful night, and we appreciate the support. And thank you also to City National Bank, Delta, and UTA for helping us get this event off the ground, and for Palm Wonderful, and to Farmers Insurance for their Diamond, Premier, Platinum, whatever the highest level of sponsorship. Between the two of them, it was already $50,000 in the door. These are phenomenal citizens of Los Angeles, and thank you.
Thank you.
And so I'd like to present this to BCRF. This is signed by every member of the council and by the mayor.
Thank you so very much.
Mr. Harris Dawson, as they make their way to the rear of the chambers.
Get everybody in. It's a big group. So, good morning, colleagues, and thank you so much, Mr. President, for the opportunity to make this presentation that I'm very, very proud of. I want to begin by thanking our own General Jeff. Where's General Jeff? There he is. Our own General Jeff. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Let's give Jeff a round of applause. My man.
General Jeff approached me and asked me to do something that I could have never, ever dreamed of doing. Many people don't know, I know I didn't know, that the reason why General Jeff is called General Jeff is because General Jeff was a general in the one and only Uncle Jam's Army.
Get out.
And for those of you who haven't heard about Uncle Jam's Army, picture Los Angeles in the mid-1970s, '76, '77, '78. Hip-hop music has started in New York City, and we're all listening to it on 1580 K-Day or 1230 KGFJ, because you could only hear hip-hop on the AM stations back then. A group of musicians got together and started promoting parties. And a young man named Roger Clayton, who also had a record store, organized a party first in Mr. Buscaino's district down at Alpine Village, right off the 110 freeway in Torrance. Right off the 110 freeway, right there to the west of the 110 freeway. And then the party grew a little bit, and they were at the Biltmore Hotel. And then the party grew a little bit more, and they were at the Convention Center downtown LA. And then it got so huge that they would sell out the sports arena once a month on a Saturday night to have parties with just DJs, no acts that were on the radio, no acts that were super popular, just people from Southern California coming to South Los Angeles, to the sports arena, to listen to DJs play, some of which are behind us.
Well, let's give all the DJs a shout out. Round of applause.
All of, all of, anything that you know about any hip-hop that comes out of Los Angeles started with the Uncle Jam's Army. So, whether it's Dr. Dre, who was a part of the world-class wrecking crew, or Ice Cube, who was a part of LA Posse, I think I saw Lonzo Williams somewhere back there. There he is. Who started the LA Posse, whether it's Ice-T, Too Short, and even the East Coast acts, because the, at that time, hip-hop was not developed into the industry that you know now. And so the main promoters wouldn't put on a hip-hop act and bring them across country. It was Uncle Jam's Army who brought Salt and Pepper here, and LL Cool J, and Houdini, Run DMC, and all of those acts, and really built the hip-hop movement there. I'm so proud to be a part of this. I was telling the group before, I was just a little too young to go to the Uncle Jam's Army parties, but I would see the posters, because they'd go around town and they'd put posters up on light poles, and you'd get a flyer in your car when you were at the Fox Hills Mall or the Balden Hills Mall about what was going to happen. And I would tell my parents, "I really want to go to this event." And I said, you know, that was like not even in the question, that you could go to the event. But sometimes if we were in the car, I would say, you know, "Let's go down Santa Barbara Avenue, so we can pass by the sports arena." And you would see people lined up in their fabulous outfits and their brand-new sneakers. And break dancers would be out in the front on Figueroa Boulevard doing their thing, having battles, and it was a great, great event. Some of the acts that are here today, and some of the pioneers that are here today, and I'm going to miss some people, so you guys got to forgive me, but I know I saw Egyptian Lover was back here. Egyptian Lover was in the house. I think I saw Battle Cat and Bobcat. There he is. Bobcat, who went on to be the DJ for LL Cool J. Arabian Prince is here? The original DJ for NWA is here, Arabian Prince. King T is here. How could I forget King T? King T, clientele. The LA Dream Team, everybody knows the hook. The LA Dream Team is in the house, right? The LA Dream Team is in this house this morning. We're very excited about it. All of what we built and what this city has built around hip-hop comes from this group. And the founder, Mr. Clayton, is not with us anymore, but we're joined today by his sister, and I want to ask her to say a few words about this movement and about her brother.
Well, let's give her a warm welcome. Welcome. You deserve it. He deserves it. This hall is your city hall. Welcome, dear.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the council of the City of Los Angeles. I'm Adrian Clayton. I'm Roger Clayton's sister. My sister Cynthia. My nephew Marcus Clayton. My nephew Andre Clayton, Roger's sons. I want to say that my brother's vision was, we grew up, we're native Californians, we're native Los Angelinos, and we're very proud of that, products of the LA Unified School District. We also want to say that my brother's vision was to just have fun, and that's how it all started. It started in the rumpus room of our house in Los Angeles, when he said, "Let's play records and let's invite all the kids in the neighborhood." And that's how it started. And that was his vision, and his vision grew to incorporate West Coast hip-hop with East Coast hip-hop and bring that vision to Los Angeles, and to keep kids busy, to keep them away from the negative activities that were focused in the City of Los Angeles. I would like to thank Councilman Dawson for bringing us here and inviting us to the City Council chambers and giving us a proclamation, because this is long overdue. It's over 30 years that that had been going on. Everyone here has been a positive influence on the City of Los Angeles, and we want to continue with that movement and let the world know that Los Angeles is a pioneer aspect. This is where hip-hop started, and we want to keep that movement going. Mr. President, I know you got hip-hop in you. I see you moving all the time.
Got a little bit.
Yeah, I see it. I see it. And I want to thank Councilman Dawson again, and I would like to thank the city chambers, the city council of Los Angeles, and the Clayton family. I also want to give honor to my parents, Emma and Jordan Clayton, for bringing us up in the City of Los Angeles and making sure that we made a positive impact. And I want to give glory to God for our lives. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Harris Dawson, I do have somebody else that wants to say something. I just wanted to find out what your...
I got one more speaker, and then...
That's no problem, because you mentioned that you were too young to go to the Jams. So, I want to recognize the one brother who was old enough to go. But we're going to have him, no, I'm going to have you wait. I'm going to have you wait, Mr. Price, Mr. Price. I'm going to have you wait and go back to, so I'm going to give you double publicity. I'm going to have you wait, Mr. Price, and go back to Mr. Harris Dawson.
All right.
But see, he's an eyewitness. All right.
So, the lead-in for Councilman Price, I want to ask one of the, someone to represent the artists who are part of the movement and the promoters who are a part of the movement. Again, this is, I don't want to understate, I'm afraid to understate the magnitude of this undertaking. These young people, this is back in the day when they were giving everybody credit cards, so they were smart enough to compile credit cards and rent out the sports arena as very, very young people, innovate musically while they were doing it, and they learned the art of promotion long before we had Instagram and Facebook and all those things. They did the hand-to-hand flyers. And this particular artist was smart enough, he knew about product placement and being an influencer. So, he was a DJ, and he was getting big, and his tapes that he would make on the bus, because he was getting bussed from our neighborhood out to the San Fernando Valley to go to school. So, he'd make tapes, and they'd sell the tapes, and he learned how to promote. And eventually, Mr. Weston, he got smart enough. He bought a Rolls Royce, and he drove it around South LA, and all of Inglewood, Compton, Watts, letting him know that, "I'm the guy. You got to come to my party on Saturday night." It became a big sensation around the country, not just here in Los Angeles. I want to call to the stage the one and only Egyptian Lover.
All right.
I'd like to thank you all, council members and President. Uncle Jam's Army was huge in LA. I mean, we had everybody following us, and I'm not talking about the internet. They followed us to all the parties. And Roger Clayton's dream was alive, and we did it. Shout out to Roger, and we're still doing it. Growing up in South Central LA, I never thought I'd ever see the Eiffel Tower or Rome or even play in Australia. And I'm doing that because of Uncle Jam's Army, and it's a blessing and a dream to be alive and doing this, what I'm doing. And thank you, guys. And thank you, guys.
Mr. Price.
Okay, so now, I'll tell you one thing, though, I've known General Jeff for like, 13 years, and I just never found the right moment, because I couldn't envision that he was a general. You know, so I was trying to find out how to approach him, so thank you for answering that question. So now, for our own general, king of hip-hop, Mr., from the New Night, Curran Price, give him a round of applause.
I don't, I don't know, Councilman Dawson, appreciate this, this presentation, and Uncle Jam's Army, still, still a classic. And, and, but, Mr. President, I don't know, I think I may have a little hip-hop left, but I don't have as much as you probably, but, but, you know, this is really...
That's because I drink milk, man, my bones are strong.
You know, the Army has just been such an institution over the years, from its very beginning. And I, I think I did go to one or two sets at the sports arena, after waiting in line, because, you know, those lines were notorious. But, but it was good, clean fun. I mean, there wasn't no gang-banging, it wasn't, you know, noticeable drug use. What I mean, it was, it was, it was a safe, clean environment that just brought out the music, brought out the creativity. And I, I wasn't aware of the, of the business background, using the credit cards to make that, to get in the spot, but I know you were there, and it was always, it was always fun, always very festive. And, you know, and it really laid the groundwork, not just for the, for the music, but, you know, a lot of the folks were also involved in Soul Train, and, and, and part of, and part of that process. Yeah, there you go, any Soul Train dancers in the house? I know there are a couple of them in here still, yeah, yeah. So it was a whole, but it was a whole movement, it was a whole period, it was a whole time, and I'm just glad I was a part of it, that, that it crossed my life, and that, and you touched the lives of so many, so millions of many, here and around the world. And I was just so proud that it originated here in Los Angeles, in South Los Angeles, and keep up the good work. It's a legacy that we all should know, remember, and, and love. And so, thank you.
Let me recognize, let me recognize Mr. Weezer.
Oh, Mr. Pres, I love you, brother. Mr. President, I'm not as young as Harris Dawson, or as old as Mr. Price, I'm somewhere in the middle. But I want to thank you all for the influence you've had on so many of us, and on music. This is incredible. Mr. Harris, Mr. Harris Dawson, thank you for bringing them in. Recognition, long overdue by Los Angeles, for the work you've all done. Thank you so much. On the east side, we had our own version of backyard parties, I remember putting some together when I was in high school, charging a dollar or two to get in. But the music you guys put together, that's everything we were playing at those parties. Congratulations, this is incredible, recognition long overdue, congratulations.
And now, now, Mr. Harris Dawson, I want to recognize Paul "White Chocolate" Keretsz.
That's right. Well, I wish I had a funny comeback to that, but I can't think of anything. I just want to say, I don't think we've ever had this much musical talent assembled in this room, and this much LA musical history. It's truly amazing, and I had never heard this story, that this started out of a party at somebody's house. That is a truly amazing story, from humble beginnings to the sports arena, and so much amazing history, I just want to commend all of you.
And, and, and Mr. Harris Dawson, let me just say this, I'm gonna get serious for two seconds, we do a lot of hard work in this place. City Hall, we have a lot of good days, we make a lot of tough votes, we make people smile, sometimes we make people sad. For you to bring this group today, and let us just have some fun, because people forget, we're just ordinary people that have extraordinary gigs, and this has just been a great 15 minutes for us. You, Mr. Harris Dawson, brought it, all you guys, this has been just a fun 15 minutes. Thank you for giving that to us. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you for, for letting us be ourselves. And yeah, I, I got a little bit left. I got a little bit left. So back to you, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, members, and I want to thank all the members of the Uncle Jam Army, and you, Mr. President. And just note, Mr. Price was talking about the parties, and I did a lot of investigation when I was young, because I was trying to talk my parents into letting me go. And I found out from my friends that if you went to the party, because there was no alcohol at the parties, right? No alcohol at the parties, so you could go if you were underage, but if you weren't supposed to be there, you might hear on the loudspeaker from the DJ booth, so-and-so, your mama is here, and she's got a belt, we need to meet you in the back. Ladies and gentlemen, tomorrow, we will declare Uncle Jam's Army Day in the City of Los Angeles.
All right.
So you guys, attention, can you guys look at the city camera right here first? Lonzo, I need you in there close, please.
Hey, guys, thanks for coming in, let's give them another round of applause, thank you all. Thank, thank you for the memories, thank you very much.
Like Ice Cube was saying, today was a good day. Personally, tomorrow is Uncle Jam's Army Day.
all. Thank, thank you for the memories, thank you very much.
It's Eric Previn from CD2 in Studio City, that is a very exciting presentation, very pleased to be here for that, very cool. Item number seven, sir, is the ABC, got a bunch of LLCs, and it's so confusing, frankly, because, you know, they, they put up a little LLC, like 935-937-North Hudson LLC, you have to go into the computer, look around, then you see that it's connected to, you know, like, 25 LLCs, you go, whoa! And then you have to sort of figure out who's the human in the mix. So I just want to be clear that the human in the mix is Dimitri Samaha, who is obviously, you know, a Sadio guy, and a longtime provider of services down at City Hall. He's a developer, and, and, you know, he's got a sixth-unit, pretty nice-looking building, I don't, it's hard to tell, I read something about something in the past that was not so, so favorable, but I'm sure that's all been squared away. You got Kenneth Marker up there from KenCor, he's one of the characters, and obviously, that's, I think, connected to Gallery VV LLC, which took a little, same kind of thing, a whole cadre. And then obviously, we want to say shout-out to Clinton Stevenson, and I guess it's John D. Landau, who's another, I think those guys are aggregated in a different LLC, the name of which seems to have escaped me, but they're, they're just coded to, you know, kind of bring you into the, the system, if you care. Number five is obviously Bonin, working diligently in Vista Del Mar, he's got some Measure M emergency funding to get in there quickly, $175,000. Not sure what the emergency is, I looked, and it sounded legitimate, so we appreciate his diligently taking care of those residents who he's been working for, for so long. Item number six, you got the LA Times, a little shout-out to the characters who are collecting $1,800 every time you post a random reward, I think that's a nice way to just kind of jiggle the lever and remind them that we're all one big happy family down here at City Hall. And certainly, the public restroom item is one that is of great appreciation, from public is finally excited...
Mr. President, we've already voted and, on, had public comment on the item number two.
Oh, on the public restroom item?
Okay, Mr. Previn, just go back on that item.
Sir, that's an honest mistake, you know I've been a big advocate for public restroom.
Just go back on the item.
Okay, fine, item number, fair enough, I'm not gonna quibble with a quibbler. And I'm also a guy who likes to talk about the HHH program, and I think, you know, MOU with the county sounds like a great area.
And again, we've already voted and had public comment on that item as well.
Why don't we give him his minute?
I didn't realize we already voted on that, sir.
Why don't we give Mr. Previn his minute for general public comment?
Well, what about item one? Give me the 10 seconds on item one.
Go ahead.
Well, come on, sir. All right, you want to be on, on...
No, Mr. Previn, you know the rules, just adhere to it.
You want to shut a guy down on Hip-Hop Day? Fine, that's mean, that's mean, but okay, I'll move forward. You know, City Hall, people coming down here and telling their various stories. I'm starting to tune into a story where I see groups of city employees, like the Bureau of Street Services, and the mayor's staff, and quite frankly, even the little Ron Galperin's team over at the controller's office, who are being forced to kind of put up noise that's not true, and then they feel terrible, and I, I'm starting to sense a kind of, I don't know, I want to say retaliation, because that's a very strong word, and you do have a stack of lawsuits, so I want to try to reduce that, not build it up, but, but is there any way that you guys could try to adopt a policy where you're not looking away from regular wrongdoing, and kind of allow the employees to do their jobs when they talk about how the streets need a machine to do the work, we've cut it out for 18 years? Let's not blame those people for the lawsuits of over $20 million in one year on bicycles, that's just not fair or appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Let's put Mr. Walsh up on the screen. John Walsh, 1A, 4A, 4B, 56, 7A, 7B, 7C, and then general public comment. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. And emergency work to stabilize Vista Del Mar, we should stop all the emergency work until the recall of Bonin has been completed.
Let's stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh. Don't, don't get off subject again.
Well, I'm talking about the item, Vista Del Mar item, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about...
Mr. Walsh, just talk about the items, I'm not gonna go back and forth with you.
Number, number six is reward for conviction of persons, the death of Donald Edward Sandstrom. Again, you have over 226 people who've been murdered by gangs, and you have, I think, one apprehension, one apprehension. It is, but don't worry, there's nothing left of the press here, and they're not gonna do any kind of story about how bad you, you have, and ended up trying to catch the murderers. And number, number, okay, the maps, check these maps out, because what happens is they, they downzone you, or upzone you, either way, so that they can build a high-rise across from where you live. Remember, if you live in a black area, that's contiguous to city, to the downtown, they want to get rid of you. They want to get rid of you and have their friends have apartments, they want their friends to build huge high-rises in the neighborhood. And we know what ethnic group is behind that, I don't have to mention it to you. And so, number, rent escrow, you actually do a good job on rent escrow, and homelessness, portable public toilets, we need more of them, we need more...
And again, we've already taken public comment and voted on that.
They're back to the items.
Okay, I'll go back to my one minute.
Okay, let's give him his one minute for general public comment.
Okay, this building is a fire trap. The city, the fire department that went down, they did absolutely nothing, they sat on their ass, they had more of the people than they needed, they came back, they did nothing, they sent a bill to FEMA for a fortune. This is a phony. And the mayor, okay, so what we need right now is to, this, this whole building, last Saturday, they came in here and started totally electrically rewiring the building. We have that document, any press member who wants to see it can go and ask any of us up here, Wayne Spindler, and we can show you the document. There is chaos here electronically, and they're keeping it quiet, because they want to suck the mayor's cock.
Thank you, Mr.
They sent a bill to FEMA for a fortune. This is a phony. And the mayor, okay, so what we need right now is to, this whole building, last Saturday, they came in here and started totally electrically rewiring the building. We have that document. Any press member who wants to see it can go and ask any of us up here, Wayne Spindler, and we can show you the document. There is chaos here electronically, and they're keeping it quiet because they want to suck the mayor's cock.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, Mr. Spindler, you have items 1A, 4A, 4B, 567A, 7B, and 7C.
Yes, good, good. Thank you so much on the Day of Artist's Yes. Mr. Puppet, Neighborhood Empowerment Winner, yes. So looking for the first item on the Day of Jamming. CD number seven is on West Beaver Street. I find that a very offensive name for a street in Monica Rodriguez's district. Referring to a beaver is politically incorrect. Please call it the Non-Animal Street. For $3,506, please cancel. Cancel this blean on this Day of Festivities for CD number seven. Now, I was going to talk about pissing and shitting, but you put it on the not-held agenda. So we get to number four. Rent escrow on Marquis's District, CD eight.
Rent escrow. Wo, 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 rent escrow. Wo, 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 wo.
So now, we're going to give amnesty to landlords, yes. And as Paul Coretts and his CD 10 years ago said, that's a big fucking deal, yes. Now, we go to number five. Emergency work to stabilize Vista del Mar. The only thing being stabilized in Vista del Mar is the dwindling political life of Mr. Bonin, yes.
No, you better dwindle back on the item, Mr. Spindler.
$175,000 in stolen gas tax funds, stolen by Mike Bonin for the stealing, for the so-called capital improvement. What they're doing is, is they're getting rid of the road diet and paying themselves.
Stay on the item.
That's what they're doing. So now, we get to item number six. Rewards for Donald Edwin. Bing, bing. $50,000. I told you, $500,000. See the puppet? We have the shot caller who will give you the healer. He wants $500,000. A shout-out to Jose down on Alvarado and Hoover. Thank you so much, my good brother. Now, we get to final maps. Fuck the final maps. I'm a puppet. You think I can read a fucking map? I can't read a final map.
Get on the subject.
CD number two is ran by Paul Coretts and a human goat. No, on number C, fuck every project in CD two, yes.
Let's give him his one-minute for general public comment.
So as we go here today, talking about coming together, after the presentation, General Jeff had a couple of guests. The police officers, the sergeant-at-arms would not let these two black men come into the chamber to take the photograph with Councilman Curran Price, Councilman Weezer. I said, please let them in. I know General Jeff. He was talking to them. Here's what the lady said, your sergeant-at-arms. Mind your own fucking business. Yes. So I want to come here and do things like today. I want to resolve things. I want to work with people. But when you've got LAPD officers handling security, sergeant-at-arms telling me to go F off when they're clearly in the wrong, that's the first thing that's got to stop. So, yeah, I want to do more things. I appreciate the fact you put General Jeff up here. I really do. I think it's wonderful. But these sergeants-at-arms, they're a bunch of cocksuckers, ZNWs, say, fuck the police!
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Leah, items 1, 4, 5, and 6. Items 1, 4, 5, and 6. Then you have general public comment as well.
Hi, my name is Leah. Number one, I would like to bring to the attention of, I think it is Beaver Street. It's a little... I have to tell you.
Mr. Spindler.
I have to tell you, after five years sitting here, this place is insane. And you make other people go insane.
Stay on the subject.
I am. Okay, so I'd like to bring to attention of 14046 Beaver Street and let them know that you still have, you're being discriminated against. People in Councilman Bonin's office don't have to comply with building and safety. They don't make them, they live above the law. So if you'd like to take another lawsuit, this is the one to get. Number four, it's the same thing. It's this discrimination. There's this dual, selective prosecution. You really have to stop this, because you've got a lot of lawsuits. And I don't want to be paying the taxes for your selective prosecution. Actually, I think you should give all taxpayers a break and remove anything that you have lawsuits on that we've brought to your attention and that you allow to continue, because you know it. You maliciously allow it to go forward, and you know it. Like number five. On Wednesday, on October 25th, I brought it to Councilman Bonin's so that there was not an emergency in the Transportation Committee. This is so important, because Councilman Bonin is the chair of the Transportation Committee. He's the councilman for District 11. And you've got a massive problem there where their slope is moving. And if it isn't stabilized, you're going to close Pacific Coast Highway, where 80,000 people go. They're widening the highway with no LADOT information, no report, no environmental records. You've got a totally dangerous condition of public property, and you forced me for five years to go read all your ordinances to learn the law in order to protect myself.
Okay, we veered off-topic.
I'm on number five.
Veer back.
And the reason it's, I am on number five. And the reason that's so important is you've got another discrimination and a pattern of practice. You've got an emergency. Why all the emergencies? You knew these were problems in 1975. So why am I talking to you about it now in 2015? It's cruel, malicious, and oppressive. And I'm done paying for property taxes when I'm not getting a service. And you know it.
Get back on the item.
Okay, I'm going to do my public comment, please.
Okay, give her a one-minute.
On Wednesday, I went to public comment and to speak on item one of the LADOT, where the general manager was supposed to... Could you please give me a moment, please? Excuse me. You guys are so disrespectful. And you want to know why people get mad? Do you want to know why people get crazy in here? Do you know why they call you all these names? I'm five years. I have one minute. And you don't have the courtesy to talk and to talk and be focused? I have to listen to you. So mean. I went to speak in the Transportation Committee so I didn't have to come here. And Bonin told me I was wrong. He told me safe streets were not under the Transportation Committee chair. He's going to put you in a much bigger lawsuit than the one you have right now with the US versus the City of Los Angeles for false and fraudulent disabled people that you lied to on your documents. All of your documents are false and fraudulent.
Thank you. So I give Mr. Herman, 1A, items 5, item 6, 6, and general public comment.
Good evening. For me, it's evening. Item 5, for the record, states... Yeah, item 5. Didn't I sign up for item 6, too? Communication from the city administrative officers. But before I go on to this item number 17/1149, for the record, we don't have a quorum, as you can count the number of empty seats.
No, you've got to get on item, get back on the item.
The emergency to work a stabilized Vista del Mar is an emergency? I wouldn't know. I'm not the expert engineer. However, regarding those bluffs that are sloping down into the ocean, I agree with Ms. Renee. Communication by the city attorney, Mr. Keebler there, transfer $175,000, Mr. Keebler, from the special gas tax street improvement. I disagree. And that's just my opinion. Thank you, Trump. And then I go to item number 6, you said, sir? Thank you. Regarding Sadio, the sellout, and Jose Weezer, who deliberately prevented me from offering a reward. I brought cash. I bummed it out right now down there at the Central Market. Look, real fucking money this time I have in my pocket.
Stick to the item.
Well, I'm trying to offer a reward. I'm on topic. The reward is information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of someone who was killed in Los Angeles. See? Just because I'm the trooper, I see what goes on. Even Charlie Beck agrees with me. Even Chief Deputy Moore agrees with me in all those number of meetings. But yet, the issue is discrimination when it comes to identifying, apprehending, and convicting someone, because they don't have an education. So they commit crimes against society. So we have a double, a double-fold issue here.
Get on the subject, Mr. Herman.
And that's the reward. Do you see? Now, I try to offer cash money, but I know my money is not...
No, no, no. You have to get on the subject. You're off-topic.
Well, next time, I won't bring up the reward, sir. So in findings to provide and offer reward, I say no to $50,000 for the information. I say snitches get stitches. Snitches get stitches. Once again, stay on topic. Fuck the direct, fuck clerk to publish the fucking required fucked-up records for additional advertising to the fucked-up effect of the fucked-up reward for the fucked-up issue, for the fucked-up condition, for the fucked-up matter of convictions or people who are fucking killed by you, Mr. Keebler, the city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Fuhr.
Let's give him his one-minute.
Money means shit.
Just give him his one-minute.
Now, as you see, for the record, my hands are bigger than most people, like me, Mr. Herman. I know that. That's why they call me Herman. Because, for the record, I have larger hands than Mr. Herman, you see? Because I like to use them to say, if you're not black, push back. If you're not brown, step back. But if you're fucking Jewish, step up, step up, step up. Why? Because I have the money. Money controls the City of Los Angeles today. They should have paid Michael Hunt off. Should have paid Wayne Spindler off. And you should have just given me Section 8 to get the fuck out of Los Angeles. This morning, at the Grand Market, as I told Eric Arcetti and Miguel Santiago, fuck Section 8. Because I'm still homeless since 2008. And you're still a fucking racist, Herman. Fuck you, racist son of a bitch. Fuck you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Thank you. So now, we're going to vote on items 4, 5, 6, and 7. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez.
Item 1A. I want to waive the outstanding balance and receive and file the matter.
I'll second it. Okay, so let's prepare to vote. Let's, Mr. Spindler, calm down. So let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, let's go to general public comment. Rachel Higgins, or Rochelle, Virginia. Mark Simon. Claudia Medina. Sylvie. Please, when I call you, come on up. Sylvie Shane Walton. Sinnerfit. Alejandro Santiago. Trinidad Ruiz. Robbie Hurst. Mark Maynor. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mark Simon, a member of the tenants' union. Just wanted to once again speak of the abuse of the Ellis Act that's going on, particularly in David Ruse's district. You know, it's going on all over the city, so none of you are innocent. My landlord evicted everyone from the building, the Ellis Act. All, you know, no-fault evictions. Within three months... Now, the Ellis Act is supposed to take five years off the rolls. Within three months, the building was completely 100% re-tenanted. And it still is. What's going on? We've asked H. Sid to investigate. No dice, no help whatsoever there. What kind of enforcement is that of the Ellis Act? You're very good at getting us out of the building. But how about dealing with crooked landlords who are so enormously abusive? Pardon?
No, go ahead. I was asking him a question. Next speaker, please. Yes, identify yourself.
Hola, mi nombre es Alejandra Santiago. Soy inquilina y miembro del Sindicato de Inquilinos de Los Ángeles también.
One moment.
Hola, mi nombre es Alejandra Santiago. Soy in...
Good morning. My name is Alejandra Santiago.
Soy inquilina y miembro del Sindicato de Inquilinos de Los Ángeles.
And I am a member of the Union of Tenants of Los Angeles.
Quiero hablar hoy sobre la crisis de vivienda.
Today, I want to speak about the housing crisis.
El desplazamiento.
The deployment.
Y el desalojo.
And eviction.
Porque los inquilinos de esta ciudad están en la mira de los desarrolladores predadores.
Because the tenants of this city are in the sight of predators of the owners.
Y propietarios.
And property owners.
Que desalojan a miles de inquilinos.
That evict thousands of tenants.
A través de hostigamiento.
Through harassment.
Coacción.
And coaction.
Con grandes aumentos de alquiler.
With greatest, highest interest in rent.
O para revender la propiedad.
Or to resell the property.
Ni siquiera los inquilinos.
Not even the tenants.
Que viven bajo control de renta.
Who live under the rent control.
Están protegidos.
Are protected.
Exigimos una moratoria.
We demand a moratorium.
En todos los desalojos sin culpa.
In all the evictions without fault.
Y una congelación de renta.
And a freeze of rent. Has it ended?
Yes.
Si.
Gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
Y francamente por la poca atención de los concejales.
And honestly, for the less attention on behalf of the council members.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Next member.
Mi nombre es Virginia Minaya. Buenas, buenos dias.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Virginia Minaya.
My name is Virginia Minaya.
Y vivo, este, en Sunset.
And I live on Sunset.
In H-Mon. Este, he's been accusa, he's been accusa, acosada.
I have been harassed.
Este, porque no he querido recibir dinero por llaves.
And because I haven't been, having the opportunity to receive money.
Vivo con una persona que está incapacitada.
I live with a handicapped person.
Y me han acosado con fumigación.
And I have been harassed with fumigation.
Y no he recibido apoyo del Departamento de Vivienda.
And I haven't received support from the Department of Housing.
Por eso me uní.
That's why I joined.
Al, al, me he unido al Sindicato de Inquilinos de Los Ángeles.
That's why I've joined the Tenants Union of Los Angeles.
Porque ellos me han podido apoyar.
Because they have been helping me.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, members of the city council. My name is Sylvie Shane. I'm here in solidarity with members of the LA Tenants Union, the Vibe Local Chapter, who rolled a six-by-six-foot ball, a papier-mache ball from Housing this morning down to City Hall. And that ball was covered with the language of the anti-harassment ordinance that we've been waiting on. And the reason we did that was to say that the ball's in your court. Housing has failed to come back with the report that they've been asked to on our anti-harassment ordinance. And we are, we are in an eviction crisis with members that you've heard from today and way more who are being evicted through harassments. So we're asking you, please, please, do your part to get this anti-harassment ordinance passed. And especially considering all the new development that's going into areas of low income, that's only going to be exacerbated. These tactics are meant to displace tenants who are paying as little as $600 a month. Thank you.
If I could get the next speaker, and I'm also looking for Trinidad Ruiz and Tracy Rosendahl. Please come forward. Okay. Yes, then. No, you're, you're...
Hi, good morning, Claudia Medina. I'm a tenant and a member of the LA Tenants Union. And I'm here asking you to move on the anti-harassment ordinance. It's very crucial. We're in an eviction crisis. I call it an eviction crisis intentionally, rather than a housing crisis. Because as you all are approving these mega developments, these gentrification projects in our low-income neighborhoods, it's causing indirect displacement and it's causing gentrification. Unlike Ms. Virginia, whose landlord constantly visits her and calls her, trying to force her to take a cash-forkeys offer. That's the evictions we're seeing, where landlords constantly are harassing tenants to give up their below-market rent-controlled tenancy. The other thing I would implore you to do is to lobby our state rep... I would implore you to do is to lobby our state representatives on your constituents' behalf. We need to repeal Costa Hawkins so that we're able to improve our rent control and be able to expand it to newer development. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Walt Center Fit, also with the Los Angeles Tenants Union. I'm here to, because we're asking you to take action on the eviction crisis, not just more words. And we have three actions specifically to ask for. One is the anti-harassment ordinance, an investigation of which was introduced by Member Weezer several months ago. H. Sid has not come back with their report. We have done a lot of their work for them. We have submitted a 30-page analysis of the other anti-harassment ordinances in the state. We have submitted a definition of 30 different kinds of landlord harassment that are prevalent in this city, and we have suggested a list of penalties. Two, we ask you, Mr. President, to vote the Mr. Bonin's motion in support of repeal of Costa Hawkins out of your Rules Committee and for adoption by this body. Three, we ask that you pass another motion, perhaps Councilmember Coretts would like to introduce it, to also instruct the city lobbyists to work for the repeal of the Ellis Act, which, as you have said, has no redeeming social value.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Tracy Rosenthal. I'm a member of the Los Angeles Tenants Union and I'm not here to speak to members of the council. I'm here to speak to the public who might be watching. If you care enough to watch this video, then you probably know that we're losing five rent-controlled units of housing every day, that our homeless population has increased by almost 30% last year to 600,000, to 60,000 people. Outside of the steps of City Hall is the Los Angeles Tenants Union, who have gathered with our list of demands to the Housing Department and City Council. We have done the work that the City Council has refused to do. We have done the work that the Housing Department has refused to do by analyzing the problems and coming up with solutions by tenants and for tenants. So I'm asking the public right now, if you can hear me, join the Los Angeles Tenants Union. Where will you go when you can't afford your neighborhood? Why not fight to stay? We're here fighting with you to keep your housing in Los Angeles. Join us.
Thank you. Now, now, is there anyone here where I just did not call your name for public comment? Okay, is there anyone? So that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted. They are referred. Announcements, members, announcements. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, just wanted to invite all of our neighbors and friends to our fourth annual South LA Dia de los Muertos celebration. It's going to be at South Park. We'll have entertainment, arts and crafts, altars, food, and fun. Festivities are going to start at 4:00, and so we are inviting everyone to come out, have some fun, and celebrate the Day of the Dead. Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President, like you, Mr. Price. Pacoima is hosting our Dia de los Muertos celebration, but for the first time, we're actually making history in that we've closed the street and are having a two-day street festival on Van Nuys Boulevard in the heart of Pacoima. And it commences this evening with a movie screening of The Book of Life, which we'd like to invite all residents to come out and come spend time with us, learn a little bit more about Dia de los Muertos. For the next two days, we have a number of bands scheduled to perform, and we've got altars, we've got chalk art, and we have a menudo contest. Mr. Wesson, we'd love for you to come join us and have a little, a bit of the Northeast San Fernando Valley menudo that we've got slated for Sunday.
Mr. Herman, please. Go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you so much. But it's going to be a wonderful event and I look forward to many of you coming out and joining us this weekend because a lot of community effort. We've decorated council today for this special occasion and hope you can join us again, starting tonight at 6:30, screening of The Book of Life. Tomorrow is from 12 to 8. We've got chalk art. All the local artists are going to be featured in wonderful bands. And Sunday, we've got a number of wonderful festivities scheduled as well. Look forward to you all participating.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? If no more announcements, if all, would please rise for adjourning motions? If everybody in the council chambers would please rise for adjourning motions? I am looking to my left side, Mr. Bloomingfield's side. I don't see any. Now I'm looking to my right, Mr. Coretts's side. Any adjourning motions? I don't see any. Members, this meeting is adjourned.